City Council, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as I think of it, I'll just remind people, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or on silent, it would be great. The first item on tonight's agenda is a couple of presentations. The first is North Suburban Hospital District. I imagine, Jerry, you're up here for that?
Yeah, I'm here for that. You there, Mike? I'm Jerry McElberg, 425 Rice Creek Boulevard. I'm here for the North Suburban Hospital District. I've been on the hospital board since 1994, and I'm here to share with you that we're going out of business. Not very many public bodies do go out of business, but we have served our purpose. I'd like to give you a little background as to how we've gotten where we are and how much money we have accumulated very recently, and how much I'm going to be able to give to the city of Fridley, and thanks for the many years that Fridley has supported our hospital board and Unity Hospital. It all goes back to about 1960, when special legislation that we took to the legislature was to create a district. There were nine cities in the area that expressed some interest in locating a hospital in this area, and five of them prevailed. And we absolutely needed five to go to the legislature, because if we had not had a majority of the nine wanting to do this, it wouldn't have happened. The five that are left that did prevail for these past 50-plus years is Blaine, Spring Lake Park, Moundsview, Fridley, and Hilltop. There were four cities that backed out, and those were Columbites, they didn't want to tax their residents. Circle Pines followed the lead of Lexington that wanted to have the hospital, but Lexington couldn't get past the Health Department because they didn't have a municipal water and sewage system. So it was hard to run a hospital with wells and septic tank. They backed out, and then Coon Rapids backed out because they had Mercy Hospital going to go up on construction soon. This is a long time ago, 1960. There's a lady, the storyline is, there was a lady by the name of Betty Wall, who lived in Moundsview, she was a housewife, and her son Randy had a tonsillectomy, and he had bleeding. And the only two hospitals out in this area that people could go to was Hennepin County and North Memorial. That was the closest hospitals, and of course, Moundsview was very rural, dirt streets, no streetlights, not safe driving at night, just like it is anyplace else in rural Minnesota. So anyway, she got the nine cities together, and let's build a hospital, and we went from there. I think you would want to know that Fridley's representative at that time on the hospital board was Charlie Johansson. Charlie Johansson was a local guy, born and raised in Fridley, he was a home builder. He built most of the homes in the Holiday Hills area. Scott lives in a Charlie Johansson house, Bob lives in a Charlie Johansson, and I live in a Charlie Johansson home. He really cared for the community and did a lot to get the hospital going, but once he got it going, he was too busy building houses, so who took his place on the board was Pat Johansson, his wife. And she served for nineteen and a half years as the board member, and then when Charlie and Pat moved to Spring Lake Park in their later years, then they both had to leave the hospital board, and I applied for, and have been on the board ever since then. The only two purposes that we had as a hospital district that we could do was to bond, sell bonds to build the hospital, and we could also tax. So we did both of those. We always felt as a hospital district, we're already here to build and to maintain and to improve upon and do the bricks and mortar stuff, and we always allowed the people that were running the hospital to manage the hospital. We didn't, as Betty Wall said, if we didn't know a darn thing about running the hospital, why would we take that on? So they started, and at one time, we had Health One and Health Central were the health organizations that really started it, and then Alaina took over in about 1972. It's hard to talk about the beginnings of Unity Hospital without mentioning somebody else who was not on the hospital board, and that was John Haynes. John Haynes was, again, a local person, lived in a couple of different houses in the neighborhood. He also turned, moved into our neighborhood and moved into a Charlie Johansson house. But John was a good friend, or became a good friend to Charlie, and John Haynes set the tone for what Unity Hospital was going to be. He was just a very, very wonderful man, and he knew everybody. He knew everybody who worked for him by name, from the custodian right up to the top. The agreement that we had with Alaina in particular was that, and when they came on the scene in 1972, that if you pay for all of the bonds and the indebtedness that we had carried forward, then they would own the hospital. There was millions of dollars of bonds and indebtedness by 1972. We, as a taxing authority, started out, when I came to the board in 1994, we only taxed $300,000 across the five communities. That wasn't very much money, and it wasn't doing the kinds of things that we wanted to do. So about ten years ago, we started levying $1.7 million to get a little bit ahead of the game, because building a hospital and maintaining a hospital was not cheap. And while we put a lot of money into the hospital, probably $18, $19 million, Alaina put in much more. You can't build a hospital for $18 or $19 million. So I want to give credit to Alaina for investing a lot of money in their hospital as they were moving forward. They notified us in about 2014 that they were coming in to pay off all of the bonds and what have you, and so in 2016, when we knew that this is going to be a transfer from North Suburban Hospital District to Alaina, we stopped taxing. We haven't taxed in 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. We haven't levied any taxes. Our assets are as follows: $3,300,000 in our cash, checking, CD accounts that had accumulated. And we had four pieces of property that we had to sell. We can't give property away, we can't use tax money to support a private entity, so we had to sell these four properties and try to get a reasonable return back to add to the coffers that we could return to the community. The four pieces, the four pieces of property, you've already touched a little bit on it because Alaina and others were in here to see about variances on sidewalks and what have you at one time, but the biggest piece of property we had is in the southwest corner of the hospital. It's about 250 to 300 parking stalls in that parking lot. It's got the community garden back there, and also has the holding pond that the Coon Creek watershed district required us to have, and it also includes, I mentioned the parking lot part of it, but it's a big parking area, and it goes all the way from the Unity Professional Building, south and all the way back towards Lyric Lane. The other three pieces of property we got in trade from the Fridley Medical Center, we sold them property on our hospital grounds to build a medical center, we got three pieces of property from them in trade. One of them is the piece of property where the old Fridley Medical Center stood, that was, has become a parking lot. Then just to the east of that, kind of down in that depression, is another parking area for about 100 cars. And then if you, the old timers will remember it as the old PDQ building right there on Osburn Road that became the offices for the Fridley Medical Center. So we owned those three pieces, commercial pieces of property. And after almost a year of negotiations and talking with, we had at least three appraisers come in. We added an appraiser, and Alaina added an appraiser, and then we had to find another appraiser that would meet both of our needs. We came up with selling those three pieces of property to Alaina for $2.2 million. So now we're up to about $5.4 million, and that's what we have decided to use as disbursements back to the community. That's a significant amount of money, and we're in the process of each of us going to our own communities and sharing with them what is, how we're going to do this. The other piece of property that we did own, did own, and Spring Lake Park expressed some interest in it, right across from the hospital is a piece of property that's been empty forever. We bought that piece of property with two kinds of thoughts in mind, one, that we would build on it, and build a medical building of some kind, to be with urgent care or physical therapy. The other part of it is we wanted to keep the competitors, not across the street from Alaina, and we thought that that might work. Spring Lake Park, of course, didn't like that part of it when we bought it, because they lose the taxing authority because we were a hospital district, but they would, they were willing to take it back as their payment for the, for going out of business for two reasons. One, they had a builder that is going to build a medical building on that piece of property, and the other is that they are going to put it back on the tax rolls, and that's important to Spring Lake Park. Many people don't know this, but that piece of property is very, very hard to develop. It has about five-foot diameter water mains, there's two of them. They go from the pumping station at the end of Osburn Road, when you're driving west and you see that tall green tower, that's the pumping station where the St. Paul Water Authority, they pump water to St. Paul. It goes right down Osburn Road and through Moundsview and what have you, it's eight and a half miles long, and the water goes into the lakes in St. Paul, and that's how they have their water sources. I've always found it amusing that St. Paul pumps water out of the Mississippi here, and Minneapolis pumps it out of the bottom mitt, and we pump ours out of wells. What do we, what do we know that they don't know? Let's see, what else? When we, we, two other things. One, our last meeting is probably going to be April 3rd. We have two things that we have to do, we have to have an audit, and we've got $5.4 million in checks floating around, we want to make sure that everything has been taken care of, so we're going to have a quick audit for the five months that we've been in business, and then a pass a resolution that says we're out of business. After that, moving forward, our attorney, Scott Leepack from Barnaguzzi, is going to be shepherding this because we've got some legal hurdles that we have to do with the state of Minnesota, including the Attorney General's office, and we also want to separate out two kinds of files. One, where there are some legal records that we have to maintain, move forward, that will probably end up in the basement of the Minnesota Historical Society, where a lot of other things end up that are not being used anymore. And then we also want to sort through the things that we've done in Fridley that might be of interest to the Fridley Historical Society. We passed a resolution that says that they can have everything that we don't need legally and pass on that, and if they choose to share that with the Anoka County Historical Society, they can do that. Well, this is probably the big moment, Scott. If you'd like to come up and join me here, I have a nice, I think it's a nice check, I think you'll find good uses for it, and because I've been rehearsing this for a long time, here's the dollar amount. Twenty dollars. Twenty dollars must be a tip.
That's awesome. That's totally awesome. It really is.
Very good.
Jerry, I'll take the check.
Okay. Cash it soon.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we might be out of business to do that.
Jerry, I want to thank you and the hospital district board for their many years of service, and because of your service and the foresight of people way back in its infancy that we have a first-rate hospital in our community. I use that as a talking point to people when they come to Fridley, and they say, "Well, what's Fridley got to offer?" And I says, "Well, you know, we have a Fortune 100 company called Medtronics, you know, it was a world headquarters, now it's a regional. We have a first-rate hospital in our community." Not, you know, these are bragging points that most suburban cities can't, can't use that, can't say it, right? So it's very nice that you guys had the foresight, and thank goodness for Fridley having the foresight to stick with you all these years and build up the hospital to what we have today, and now we're just getting a little...
A little return on your investment.
A little bit of a return on the investment. I want you to share it with the rest of the hospital district board.
We'll do that.
We're very grateful for this, and we will use this sparingly and well for our, in future, for our city.
Well, the Historical Society might be interested in how you might be using this, so if you just drop me a note, I'll see that it gets into the archives for that, too. Thanks again, Scott.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want us behind the podium or someplace else?
Why don't you come right in front of us?
Come on, go in front of it.
We're going to take a picture.
Maybe that, maybe that, I'm going to have something for history, right?
I think they lost the check. He already lost the check.
Zoom in on it. He lost his check.
Doesn't have Scott Laun's name on it, does it?
Unfortunately. Councilmember Balkum, it's certainly not in my name, but as representative for the city, as the mayor, I'm happy to accept this check, and it is made out of the city of Fridley. So I'll hold it for a few minutes, and then it'll get passed on and then get put into the account. So please understand that we will use it wisely and sparingly and try to keep it in our savings account for a period of time.
Your honor, I'd like to remind the council that you took some action not too long ago to creating the Community Investment Fund, and I'll ask, that's where this check will be going to, and maybe our finance director, Dan Tinter, could just remind the council what will be done with that, that check, and where it will go within the entire community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Weisopel. As indicated, about a month ago, the council adopted a policy for the Community Investment Fund, and that policy contained language that any unexpected payments or windfalls to the city of Fridley would be deposited in the fund and then used to make loans to support capital improvement projects related to the city's public utilities. And then as those utilities repay those loans, the interest that the city earns on those interfund loans will be used to support improvements to the city's park and recreation system.
So we're going to make the interest rather than the bank?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
That's a good thing. Thanks again, Jerry, for coming out this evening.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, thanks for the history lesson. That was great.
Yeah, that was great, down memory lane.
Well, feel free if you find some more money, after you do that audit, you know? Right?
Okay, moving on, our next presentation is spring flooding.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Jim Kusluter, I'm the Public Works Director. With me tonight is Brian Worky, he's the Director of the Public Safety Department, and unfortunately, John Berg, who was going to give this presentation originally with the Public Safety Emergency Management Division, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm giving his presentation. It's largely his, I tweaked it a little bit, but... So I wanted to talk about the current flood threat for the state. Everybody's probably been hearing about this, but so far in March, we had a snowpack early in the month, and that was on top of an already very high snowpack, and it warmed and rained over the last two weeks, mainly about a week, week and a half ago. And some of the water absorbed in the snowpack, and lots of it ponded in low spots. They call this ripening of the snowpack. That's meteorologists, I guess. Warmed it toward a melting temperature and caused a number of ice jams and some ice jam flooding, especially in central Minnesota Basin and tributaries runoff started. And so this would be, I guess, my photo of a ripe snowpack. This is looking at a flood improvement that we did, and you know, there's water and snow packed into this channel, which is about three feet deep from what you can see. So it's ready to runoff. So for Fridley, so far in March, warmer weather and rain in the last two weeks caused some localized flooding. We had rain melt on frozen ground, basically, which is somewhat unusual occurrence, you know? We typically are seeing less frost at the time that the melt happens in earnest. So Public Works and Public Safety documented 66 reports of flooded roadways, parking areas, yards, and residential basements. We had Lucialane was closed due to flooding for two days, that was at the corner where we've narrowed the roadway. Fridley Public Safety staff provided some emergency assistance for some yard flooding. So as you can see here, this is a typical area where a backyard may infiltrate typically with our wonderful Fridley sands, and because of the frost, it's not doing so, and so the water's standing and ponding and pooling. And so they had a, they came up with the idea of a pump off of a PTO off this four-wheeler, which is a great idea, and they can run a lot of hose, more than we can run with any of our pumps. Our pumps are big, and we have short hoses and so on and so forth, so they could address some of these areas. And then also, they have, this is a pretty light piece of equipment, so it can go places where our heavier equipment can't get to. So it was really, we were really happy to see that, and they've been using it through today, actually, on different properties. So for flood factors of this year, obviously, we had a wet autumn in 2018 and left soil moisture above normal before freeze-up. The frost depth, we had two to four feet. The thaws now started, and, you know, but we have frost a couple inches from the top, from the surface in a couple of places. And currently, we still have some snowpack to melt, one and a half to four inches of water over our watershed areas. And where the snow has gone, water is collecting low spots, ditches, drainage, and marshes, and in short, there's water, like, waiting to move out of these areas. And fortunately, we've had recent mild temperatures over the past weekend, and looks like we're going to continue on some of those milder temperatures, which slow the melt. Basically, we get melty period during the day, freezing period at night, that's perfect, that's what we want to see to reduce the chance for flooding. So here's a, here's the outfall at Riverview Heights, and you know, we had a lot of snow, and then we've got rushing water coming off that outfall. So Coon Creek and our watershed district partners helped us out with forecasting, and our other watershed, as I said, our other watershed district partners as well, but they provided us with some mapping ahead of kind of the worst of this flash flooding, and so we're able to look at what areas we might have trouble with. And so the predicted locations that require, there were some predicted locations that required clearing, this is at Ironton, and so this is draining all of Springbrook watershed. And then watershed staff was out and about, and they provided some monitoring and alerts also to our staff, so that was great. So we had some extra folks out there looking out for our trouble spots. The Mississippi River is kind of what we're faced with going forward here, some creeks, some other water bodies, but we're watching the river quite a bit. The National Weather Service does forecasts for that, and they typically issue them every two weeks in the spring. The most recent probability forecast was on the 11th, and it forecasts river levels through June and probabilities through June. They won't issue another probability forecast because it's their long range, and they're seeing, they're seeing active flood warnings and active rising of rivers. And so there's a flood warning for the Mississippi River above St. Paul, including Fridley, but there are more severe flood warnings downstream of the confluence with Minnesota and St. Croix rivers, and within both of those rivers as well, the Minnesota River particularly. We're getting basically weekly updates from the National Weather Service at this time, actually, twice a week is what they're giving presentations on and updates, but I think north metro, we're in pretty good shape, north of, like I said, Mississippi, north of the confluence is not so bad. But these are the probability forecasts they give over the long range, and basically, what you see here, in summary, is the black line on the left is this, this spring, the blue line is the historic trend. So you can see the probability of exceeding flood levels, maybe 20% greater than normal, you know? In a typical year, it's less than 10%. So the predictions from that 3/11 forecast was that there's a 70% chance that the river will reach our, reach our action level of 14 feet, measured at the river gauge at 37th Avenue at Minneapolis Water Works, and a 20% chance that the river would exceed a 17.1-foot elevation, which equaled the '97 spring flood. That's the fifth highest flood on record, and there was a 6% chance that the river would reach a 20-foot, which equaled the 1965 spring flood, which is the highest flood on record. So that's as of 3/11. It's abated somewhat since then, but the probability of reaching an action level is 25% lower than it was in 2011, so that was the last time we really had to worry about river flooding, and so actually, we were in, we had a little bit higher probability then of having a problem, so. But this is substantial, and so many variables can change the forecast very quickly with higher or lower river cresting, especially rainfall at this time, this is a critical period, so before the ground thaws, if we get substantial rainfall upstream, and it could be up in Saint Cloud, if we had, you know, big rainstorms up there, that, that could have, have an adverse impact on us, so. And being close to the action levels where we may flood is never a comfortable situation to be in. So this was the 3/11 extended forecast for exceedance, so you can see that there was really very little probability that, you know, we'd be over that historic level, but it's always, it's there. And so this gives us kind of a chart over time of when they expect the highest peak to be, and in 3/11, since then, we've had a little more rapid melting, so that curve has moved up in time forward toward us. At that, during that forecast, they indicated major flooding as a slight possibility from 4/22 through 4/28. I would say that that's moved back to earlier in April at this point. And the same variables that affect the height of the river crest can significantly change the forecast and result in earlier or later timing of the river crest. So this is our weekly forecast, or our weak forecast, weak look ahead, and historic data trend. So this is at the gauge at 37th Avenue. This is updated several times daily. This was, this is an update that was produced at 4:30 this afternoon. They expect a near-term crest, so a crest below that 14-foot action level of 13.2. We don't totally rely on that, you know, we know that that can fluctuate up or down. It looks like today, we had maybe some ice jam or something that happened there that caused the peak, the local peak, but it is rising toward that 13.2, and that, that number gets adjusted every time they forecast, you know, like I said, several times a day. So we do watch that, and it does fluctuate. It's close enough to our action level where we're getting prepared for that, for this weekend. So since 1997, one of the things that we do, we've had a flood control gate and pump installed at Springbrook Creek Upfall in Riverview Heights, actually, I think it was installed in 1999. Equipment to operate the system is mobilized when action levels are reached, and that equipment's being readied now. So when I say mobilized, that'll be out on site. So we're getting that ready, making sure that we've got some additional pumping capacity out there, we've got equipment to run the pump, we've got, we'll have, we'll have a crane to set the motor on that pump and to, to connect it up. And that system was installed to design, and designed to handle an event similar to 1997, probably a little higher than that, and they raised 79th Avenue, some of you might remember that, and removed homes that were subject to flooding at that time. The city also operates weirs and other stormwater systems, Springbrook Nature Center, Lock Lake Dam, and the Springbrook Nature Center one is, you know, kind of interactive with the system, so we are letting water out of Springbrook at this point, and because if we close the gate on that, on the, on the Riverview Heights system, we want to be able to store water up at Springbrook as much as we can. So we'll empty it out first, and we did some of that in the past week. And then also, we operate the Lock Lake Dam, so we try to manage that as well. We have less concern with downstream flooding there, there's not, no, no homes that are subject to flooding downstream of the dam, and so we're, we're just trying to control things as far as erosion goes and so forth. And so here's a, here's an aerial photo, this was taken by Anoka County Emergency Management with their drone today. This is the Riverview Heights area. So if you see that curved road in the foreground, that's 79th Avenue, that's built up since 97 event, and then the, the channel coming out there is actually the, actually Springbrook Creek, that's the end of Springbrook Creek. On the other side of the road from that, you'll see a kind of a triangular piece of property that's not built on, that's a pond up there, that's a storage pond, there's also a storage pond on the east side, which the creek flows through. And so on the south side of the road there, there is, you'll see a green structure if you ever ride out there, and that's, that's the pump, that's, that's able to pump. So what we do is we close a gate there, keep the river from backflooding into the neighborhood, and then we pump the water out of the pond, out of the two ponds. and then we pump the water out of the pond, out of the two ponds. So we have to keep up with the, with the water flowing down from Springbrook Creek. So and you can see the river today had some ice in it. It was kind of odd Friday, it was clear. And then this morning, it was, boy, there was a lot, I don't know if you saw the river, but there was a lot of ice out there. There was a lot more than there is shown in this photo. I would say it was probably twenty, twenty-five percent ice coverage. So small, small drifts of ice coming from somewhere upstream. Other city preparation that we're doing, as noted in our memo to you, we're providing sandbags and sand at the Public Works facility for Fridley residents. And any, any amount under a hundred bags, they can come and obtain themselves. If they have more than a hundred bags, it becomes cumbersome for them to manage to move those, so we'll bring out the sandbags and sand at, at our cost to the resident. Our address at Public Works is four-hundred-seventy-first Avenue Northeast, and the yard is opening in, open in the evenings, I believe, till midnight. And then city staff are monitoring the weather and flooding predictions and meeting periodically to discuss, discuss planning. And we're prepared to respond in the event localized flooding occurs at the river, reaches that action level of fourteen feet. So here's our sandbag station. Actually, we've got some filling, I guess we built out a, a filling station in addition to this to try to make it easier to fill. We sent a letter out to five-hundred properties that are adjacent to or have portions within the hundred-year floodplain, outlining the need for owners to prepare for protection of their properties. The city's website includes a flood preparation page that is being updated regularly, includes information on flood preparedness, flood insurance, flood maps, forecasts, and safety that folks should get familiar with if they're not familiar with that, especially if they receive this letter and they just, they're new in their property and they're unaware that they're maybe subject to flooding. Impacts to private properties in nineteen-ninety-seven, several homes along the Mississippi River and Rice Creek were impacted by flooding, and sandbag, sandbags were placed as protection and, just historically. In 2011, residents were provided sandbags in several homes, sandbag along creeks. In some cases, volunteers were organized to assist residents. At this time, it appears we will not, not require volunteers and temporary barriers for the city installation of augmented protection, and that might be such things as at Riverview Heights and augmenting the levy that's there. So if the, if the levels don't exceed twenty, then, you know, we're in pretty, we're in good shape there. We don't need any augmented protection. So, and you'll see around the community today that I took this photo, the frost effects are diminishing. This area was, is east of Creek Ridge Park, and this area was kind of impounded quite a bit of water. Basically, kind of all the background was, it was much higher anyway, probably two or three feet higher than it is shown right now. So it's diminishing over time. So some of these areas are finally thawing. There's potential that properties could be affected along creeks running through the city as well. And so generally, I think property owners should be reviewing their insurance options or should have, you know, prior to this event or as they learned of this event. But it's never a bad time to do so for the next event. The city forces public safety, public works, will provide some vigilance in inspection, inspecting properties along water bodies. This is a property down in Rice Creek. That's probably their most subject to potential flood impacts when the creek rises. And so you can see how close they are at this point. The city of Fridley and/or Anoka County will issue a request for volunteers if the need is anticipated through our public safety department. And if you will be in need of assistance, we request that you contact the city after a request for volunteers is issued, or let us know of the need for assistance. And you can contact us at the Public Works main line, five-seven-two-three-five-six-six. Nine-one-one is an alternative, alternative number if no one is available to answer. And people should not be shy about contacting that number if they have an issue, pending issue. We'd rather deal with it when it's a small issue rather than a large issue. So Public Works and Public Safety staff will continue monitoring conditions. This is the Moore Lake Outlet today, so flowing well. Doesn't seem to be overly high. And then if you have questions, there's a flood preparation page, as I mentioned. Here's the direct link to that, fridleymn.gov/flood. If you still have a question at five-seven-two-three-five-six-six, or Public Safety Department can help you at five-seven-two-three-six-two-nine. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. Does the council have any questions regarding the presentation?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kozlowski, did you say that they can get free sandbags? It's just there's a delivery if they want over a hundred bags? So if they can just come and, how, how do they arrange, can they just drive in there and get sandbags, or as long as they show their ID or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Volcom, right now, we are not manning that station, so we're taking on people's honor. We do have security cameras out there. So I'm guessing Fridley Public Safety occasionally, you know, may, may ride into the Public Works Yard. The Public Works Yard is secure otherwise, so folks can, Fridley residents, it's open to Fridley residents. And we know that after hours is an important time for people. People are working, doing other things, and so we thought it was best just to leave it open. And for those that really wanted to fill bags, that they can go ahead and do that.
Great. And then so is there, they can also come in the morning anytime or?
Absolutely. They can come during the day, and, you know, our staff is down there at six AM, and they can call if they need a delivery, and we'd be glad to oblige them. We haven't had anybody take us up on that. We had the same program in 2011. I think we had one property owner that requested, you know, that really needed some of those bags, and so we did do a delivery to one property.
Great. And then what about the Craig Brook, Stony Brook, the outfall there, that there was some erosion? What are we, are we doing anything there on that piece?
The, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Volcom, the project is well underway. I would say that all the stormwater structures, manholes are set. The sheet piling is in. Right, this, as of this morning, they were setting riprap. We did have a discussion with the contractor on Friday and today with the forecasts. And I think what we are encouraging them to do is try to wrap up as much of the work as they could, so they didn't have to get back down, because the river receding takes quite a bit longer than the river rising at this point. So it, you know, it may take weeks for them to be able to get back down there. And so we thought it best if they can accelerate, you know, and finish up the substantial work that they're doing, and still, you know, do good quality work, that that would be the best opportunity. So it's up to the contractor whether they decide they want to do that or not, but we put them on notice that this was coming, and so they shouldn't have any concerns if they have, do have to come back and re-mobilize at some later date and finish the project.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Jim, thanks for the update. I hope that this will be on the website, or that people can, hopefully, they'll look at the website if they didn't hear this presentation here, so that. I know I've received some calls from people about what they can do, and I've directed them to Public Works to get sandbags, so.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Let's move on. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the proposed consent agenda, and our city manager will give us that overview.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a couple of items for the consent agenda today, first being our approval of minutes from the city council meeting of March 11th. A second reading of an ordinance prohibiting acceptance or consideration of zoning applications related to massage therapy businesses, and to allow the study of adoption or amendment of official controls and adopt official title in the summary ordinance. We have an amendment, a professional services agreement with SEH for Lock Park Water Treatment Plant. That's project number seventeen-five-oh-nine. Approval of a cost-sharing agreement with Rice Creek Watershed District for a study on Norton Creek Watershed. A resolution approving gifts, donations, and sponsorships to the city of Fridley. Approval of the 2019 reappointments to city commissions and claims, including P-card. And that is the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council or any of these items that you wish to have removed for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove the appointments, reappointments to the city of Fridley commissions.
Okay, and you want to take that up when?
Nine-B is fine.
Nine, nine-A?
Yeah, nine, yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, sure.
Nine. Okay, item six. Okay, any others? Anybody in the audience that wishes to remove any of the proposed consent agenda items for further consideration? Hearing none, seeing none?
If none. With the removal of item six and placing it as nine-A, I would move approval of the proposed consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Motion, we have a second. If there's no discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Which leads us to open forum. Anybody in the audience that wish to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on.
Move the adoption of the agenda with addition of nine-A.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. If there's no discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. This leads us under new business, item number eight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we have two items for your consideration related to the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. And the first is consideration of the financing. So as part of this presentation, I'll just quickly walk through just a brief review of the Community Investment Fund. We already had a little bit of a preview of that earlier this evening as a part of the presentation of the, about 1.6 million dollars. I'll talk specifically about the inter-fund loan authorization, and then there is one particular federal regulation that's included in the resolution in your packet that I'll touch on briefly. So just as a reminder, and again, we already chatted about it a little bit earlier this evening, is on February 25th, 2019, the city council did create the Community Investment Fund. And as a part of that action, there was also a corresponding policy that established the process that the city would use to ultimately issue inter-fund loans to support capital project expenditures related to the city's public utilities, meaning the water utility, sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer utilities. As mentioned, when those loans are repaid, the city would capture the interest income on those loans and then use them to support parks and recreation-related improvements. And it's also important to mention, and I'll touch on this a little bit later in my presentation, that the policy also provided guidance regarding the use of the fund to support debt service, and then also the minimum fund balances that the city would maintain in order to ensure the solvency of the fund. So you've seen this graphic before, but I think it's just a nice illustration to remind the, the council and the public how the model actually works. You can see on the left there, the various funding sources that the city uses. For example, under miscellaneous proceeds and revenues, we talked earlier today about the 1.6 million dollar windfall from the dissolution of the North suburban hospital district. So the city will deposit those funds, and those would go into the Community Investment Fund. And right now, where we're at in this process is essentially step number two, or at the top of the graphic, where we would issue the inter-fund loans, in this case, to the water utility to support improvements related to the Lock Park Water Treatment Facility. And then over time, and I'll talk about what the term looks like in a second here, those utility funds would essentially repay those loans with interest. And then that interest income would be used as step four there to support the park capital improvement fund. So per the policy and section seven-ten of the charter, the city council may authorize inter-fund loan resolution, excuse me, by resolution. And the policy also says that that action also has to be included in the capital investment program. Two thousand and nineteen budget, the council did approve up to 3.8 million dollars over a two-year period, 3.3 million in 2019, and another 500,000 in 2020 for the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. As will be discussed in the next memo, but just as way of informing the financing, the project has decreased in costs since the adoption of the CIP. So as a result, staff is recommending that the council authorize inter-fund loan in the amount of 3.6 million dollars from the CI fund into the water utility fund, and that the water utility fund would repay that loan over a 10-year period with interest. It's worth noting that our internal calculations, depending on the final cost of the project, but up to that six-point, 3.6 million dollars, the city would net about 620,000 dollars in interest over the period of the loan. So this is a summary of the inter-fund loan terms, and this is also included in the resolution in your packet. But as mentioned here, the principal would be for up to 3.6 million dollars. The interest rate would be set at three percent. When setting the interest rate, we use essentially two benchmarks. The first is what is happening in the bond market, or what would hap, what would the interest rate we would pay if we went out and borrowed the money? And then also, what would the interest rate be if the city did not issue an inter-fund loan and otherwise invested the funds? So we look at those two considerations, what we could borrow the money for and what we could earn on an investment, to essentially decide on what is a fair value for the taxpayers in issuing this inter-fund loan. The loan length is listed for up to 10 years. This is consistent with the policy. And the annual payment is for up to 422,030. I would make just a note at this point, there is a typo in the resolution that's included in your packet. It calls for an annual payment of 420,030, actually 422. So when the, when we discuss the resolution later in the presentation, I would ask that you adopt it with that amendment included. And then the first payment date would basically begin the year after the project was completed in 2020, and then continue on for a decade until the loan was satisfied and fully repaid. Just as some brief information for you, this is something of a busy chart, but I think it illustrates the financial solvency of the fund itself. You'll notice in each given year, the light blue represents the revenues that the fund would receive. The dark blue are the total expenditures. So you see in 2019, we have a rather large spike with the additional 3.6 million dollar loan. And then the green in the background is the minimum fund balance that's been established by the policy. And then ultimately, that turquoise line is the ending cash balance. And if I would draw your attention to anything on this chart, you would notice that the green and the turquoise line never touch each other, meaning that the fund always maintain, is always above the minimum fund balance that's been established by the policy. And in fact, it is so on a, on a 10-year horizon. As you can see, we've projected all the way out to 2029. You will notice that there are slight upticks in expenditures in 2020, 2021, 2024, and 2028. Those are the points in time when we would anticipate having additional loans. Oh, I think we're back. Sorry about that. We lost the display for a moment. During, in those four years, we would have additional loans. Those years were identified as a part of the city's 2017 utility rate study as being years when the city would have significant enough projects to bond for. So this program assumes that rather than bonding, we'd be issuing inter-fund loans in the amounts described in the study. And even including those amounts, you can see that by the end of the 2029 projection, we do have an ending cash balance estimated in excess of 4 million dollars, or 3 million dollars beyond the minimum fund balance described in the policy. Lastly, you'll notice in the resolution that was included in your packet, there is some discussion about bond proceeds. Per certain Department of Treasury regulations, a municipality may seek to reimburse itself from the issuance of bonds for eligible expenditures. These include things like design and capital costs, bond issuance costs, and other reasonable expenditures that are related to the project. The action that's included in your packet simply reserves the right of the city to issue bonds at a future date to reimburse itself for project activities. And as discussed in your memo and also stressed in the resolution, any effort related to actual debt issuance will actually require separate actions of the council. So we would still have to present you at some future date with a resolution to induce the sale of the bonds, and then have to go through the bond sale process, and then present another resolution for you to accept the bonds. So this action included in the resolution does not obligate you to bond. It does not initiate the bond process. It just reserves the city's right to issue bonds at a later date if it so decides, basically in a fashion that's been consistent with how the city has done practice, has financed these projects in the past. Because it's worth noting that this is actually the first time that we'll be issuing a loan through the Community Investment Fund. So we are reserving our right to bond. So based on the process to date and the policy that's been established, staff has a recommendation to adopt the resolution, which essentially accomplishes two goals. The first is to authorize and approve the inter-fund loan for the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. And then, as I just discussed, establish compliance with applicable bond regulations. And that resolution can be found on pages seventy through seventy-three in your packet. And just as a reminder, I would ask that you adopt it with that slight revision to the annual payment amount, the additional 2,000 dollars. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the financing, the underlying policy, or anything else related to the Community Investment Fund.
Thank you for the presentation. The council, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't necessarily have a question so much as a comment of, it's really nice to see that this process took place this evening. As we just watched it, we have something going into this fund that was just created. I can only imagine what the council did years ago without this particular spot. What would happen with that 1.6 million dollars in the hospital piece? What would that be? So I really appreciate that this went through, and, and it's got a process that's acceptable.
Great. Thanks for the comment. Councilmember Volcom?
Mr. Mayor, my question is, so it's 3.6 million dollars. So if this, if it, which we sometimes know that we have change orders and that type of thing, what? what, where do those funds, say, we pretty well have it, we know that we have a, a firm that we've hired that's helped us work out this whole project, but what happens if it's a half a million dollars more? Where does, how is that then?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so, um, there are a few answers to that question. The first would be that the project finance itself, uh, contains about a 2.5% contingency or just under $100,000 that would be available to process change orders.
That's why I made it 500. I'm seeing that little note.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, you said it, there was a contingency and that's why I made the amount more than that $100,000.
Yes. Uh, in, um, that situation, there would be two approaches. The first would be, uh, the council could authorize the change order using the, um, water utility fund reserve, as has been the practice in the past. Or the resolution is, uh, that is being offered this evening can always be amended by the council to modify the size of the, uh, inter-fund loan. It's worth noting that the amounts that are included are simply not to exceed amounts. If there were ever a time when we were to exceed it, the resolution and the policy actually require, um, staff, if we were going to use the loan to present that as an option to the council and then ask for you to modify the resolution accordingly. As discussed earlier in the presentation, there are, um, sufficient funds available actually to support a change order in the, uh, amount that you suggested. So I think we'd be in a strong position to respond to, um, that type of, uh, development in the project.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
If it's so in order, I move a resolution authorizing and approving an inter-fund loan for the Lock Park Water Treatment Plan Improvement Project and establishing compliance with applicable bond reimbursement regulations with the one change on the bottom of page 70, um, under 2.2, annual payment amount to be $422,030. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes.
Okay, and so that's, uh, resolution pages 70 through, um, 73.
And I'll second that motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, motion also carries. This leads us to item number nine under new business, uh, to receive the bids and awards for this project.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, um, so this is for project, uh, 17509, the project that we've been talking about, Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement. Um, City of Fridley's Lock Park Water Treatment Plant was originally constructed in 1969. The plant was upgraded in 1993. Improvements at that time included building and process piping modifications as well as electrical and control improvements. The plan consists of the following: two public water supply wells, two pressure filter tanks with filtration media and air wash grids. And those are used to backwash and clean the filters at intervals. Um, there are, there's process piping, control valves, and other support equipment. There's pre and post chemical treatment equipment and associated chemical storage areas and tanks. Here's the location of the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant, um, just south of our new, uh, Fridley Civic Campus. Um, each filter is equipped with air wash grids for backwashing the media. And following the backwash cycle, the turbid water in the, uh, backwash is initially routed to the sanitary sewer by gravity. After discharging to the sewer for a set period of time, the remaining effluent is diverted into the storm drain, um, via gravity, and then it gets conveyed to Rice Creek. Um, so that's current, that's our current operation. And, um, that operation is not, uh, foolproof. We have had, um, exceedances, particularly with the discharge to storm and, you know, for, basically for solids, suspended solids. Um, so, we, we have been put on notice on those occasions, um, that we need to rectify our, uh, situation. Currently, there's an air wash grid failure in filter tank one, and so we have difficulty backwashing either tank with reliability. Valves, actuators, and associated pertinence are corroded and continual maintenance is required by staff to keep the valves functioning and the critical components. And then a chemical storage room houses all treatment chemicals. So this plant has not been in full operation, eh, for over two years now. And so given the last major upgrades were made over two decades ago and due to ongoing operational deficiencies, the City of Fridley had retained, uh, engineering services of SEH to assist in design of the much-needed water treatment plant improvements, which include refurbishing the existing filter tanks, the interior and exterior, replacing control valves, price, process piping modifications, dedicated chemical storage rooms and chemical feed equipment, constructing a backwash water recovery tank. Um, that's an exterior tank that, when we backwash water, we can reuse that water. Um, so we don't have to pump as much out of the well. We can reduce our power output, our power consumption and our water consumption generally. Um, other upgrades would include electrical, mechanical, HVAC, and painting and civil site work with the modifications, uh, with the roadway and new driveway access and parking. So the project is for improving the reliability of the plant filter operation, improved treatment of public water supply, and filter backwash water reuse, in summary. As noted, the backwash water is routed to the sanitary sewer and storm sewer, ultimately to Rice Creek. One of the crowning environmental benefits of the addition of the new backwash reclaim base in the city will eliminate approximately 95% waste of a public water resource and discontinued discharge to Rice Creek, which eliminates possible surface water quality issues or violations. The Lock Park Treatment Plan Improvement, um, is included in the city's capital investment program at $3.8 million, as Mr. Tinter has stated, and will be funded from an inter-fund loan from the community invest- investment fund, which will be repaid through water utility fund reserves over a 10-year period. Basically, the project's funded by everyone's water rates in Fridley. Um, we had a bid opening on January 30th, 2019. The engineer's estimate was just shy of $3.6 million. We had seven responsive bids, two very competitive bids below the engineer's estimate, two additional higher bids within 5% of the engineer's estimate. So a good spread for bidding. And, uh, our low bid was from Magna Construction at $3.349 million, which is 7% below the engineer's estimate. And Magna Construction is from Chanhassen. And with the information provided with their bid, we've determined that they have a sufficient understanding of the project and they are capable of performing the construction for which they bid. Therefore, staff recommends the city council move to receive the bids for the attached bid tabulation. I think it's on page 77. An award, the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project 17-509 to Magna Construction Incorporated of Chanhassen, Minnesota, in the amount of $3,349,000. If approved, staff will notify the contractor of the award, issue notice to proceed to the contractor upon receipt of acceptable submittals for insurance and other similar material.
Thank you, Mr. Cozlucher. The council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cozlucher, um, we all had the opportunity to tour the, um, water treatment plant. It's amazing what goes on there and, uh, how much the staff has really taken on, um, making the best of what they had for many years, but also, um, all the things they've done to think through the whole process. And, uh, um, I think we're in, I, not think, I know we're in very good hands with our water and our staff. And, uh, this is also just gonna be a better, uh, way of, of delivering and, and for, and a work environment for them besides. But I think the huge thing is the amount of water that's gonna be not going in, um, uh, out of here and actually being reused. It's, uh, it's amazing. So, um, it was, I don't know, I'm, I was, it was incredible. Anyway. So, just wanted to mention that. So, long overdue and, uh, definitely needs to be done, but, um, gonna take us, what, for the next 20 years, do you think, Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Volcom, at least that long. And I know this, the feedback that I got from staff was that that was a great experience to tour with you. So they appreciated your questions and your attention for that evening and, um, your time. They thought it was a very, you know, they benefited as well from hearing what you were interested in, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, I have a question. Mr. Cozlucher?
Yes.
Uh, how many plants, uh, do we have here in Fridley like this? And what, what, what is their, uh, condition? I think I remember this is the last plant to go through this.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Agar, uh, yes, this is our third, this is our third plant to go through this kind of rehabilitation rotation. So, we went, of course, out of sequence like we do. We went 1, 3, 2. So, this plant had been rehabilitated in 93, about the time that, um, our treatment plant three was rebuilt. Uh, treatment plant three was in a little more, um, uh, how should I say, a little more affordable need. And so we prioritized that ahead, knowing that this would be, you know, it's quite a big project for the utility to swallow. And so, um, you know, so this was, you know, kind of the last one. But, um, obviously, warranted, um, the, uh, Commons Park Treatment Plant, um, those filters in, in that plant has been rehabilitated several times with several different features. But the filters mainly were rehabilitated in 2009 and, or 2005 and 2009. So it was done in two phases there. So we're in pretty good shape. You know, if you look back, 2009, that's 14 years. So we're, you know, we're inching toward that 20-year filter rehab. You know, but it, it'll probably be a more modest rehab. We did a similar air wash grid replacement, which, these are the expensive components when you have to get inside those filter vessels and do work. You know, and you need, you need to hire a very thin person to get inside those filter vessels if you saw the hatch. And, um, you know, so it's specialized work, it's specialized contractors, so it's not exactly cheap to do. And rightly so. It's a lot of handwork, difficult, uh, conditions, and so really confined space. Um, and so, you know, it isn't cheap, but we're past that. And Commons Park should be in pretty good shape as far as the interior, interior of the filters. We may have to replace media, which will be a much more modest, modest expense going around and going forward, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
If so in order, I move to receive the bids per the attached bid tabulation and award the Lock Park Water Treatment Plan Improvement Project 17-509 to Magna Construction Incorporated of Chanhassen, Minnesota, in the amount of $3,349,000. And the pages 76 and 77 for the bids.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any final discussion? I would just make comment that we're gonna be real busy in this area, uh, through this, this year with, uh, additional street work and, uh, more housing being built, uh, townhouses being started and the reconstruction of, uh, our streets in this area, as well as doing a water, uh, a large water, uh, treatment plant project. So, we're gonna be pretty busy.
Everything's gonna be so shiny and new, you're gonna need sunglasses.
Yeah, there you go. I hope so. Okay, with that, if there's no other comments, uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. So it leads us to, uh, informal status reports. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look back.
9A.
Weather, quick to catch me, aren't they? Uh, okay, so, item number 9A, which was previously removed from consent, item six. Councilmember Volcom?
Okay, um, we have some, uh, changes or additions, so, um, under, we had some, also had some, uh, interviews tonight with some potential, um, appointments. So, on the first one would be under the planning commission, Terry McCullen. Did I pronounce your name right?
Very close.
Okay.
Better than most.
Okay. And then under appeals, um, remove, um, Blaine Jones. I just got a message from him that, um, he's been on the commission for 20-some years, we thank him for his service. And he, um, wants someone new and, uh, so that, there's, there will be a opening there, so we will not be reappointing him.
Okay.
And then on, uh, pa- on the next page, on page 40, Kyle McRoone, McRooney, um, is on the, um, he is now on the HRA and would like to have his name removed. And then we would appoint, um, Amy Dirts, um, and her appointment would be, uh, let's see, up in 420, uh, 4121.
And I think you meant the, uh, environmental quality.
Oh, ex- yes, excuse me, thank you. Yes, environmental quality, sorry. Um, and then under parks and rec, um, Greg Ackerman has, uh, moved out of our city. And in, uh, his place, we would put Ryan Gerhard, um, and his appointment would be 4121 also. And I move to, uh, approve those appointments in the other.
Okay, just so I'm clear here, Kyle Mulrooney, he's, he, you said, uh...
Remove him from the environment and quality energy and, and place...
So he's staying on the housing redevelopment?
Yes. And then in his place, we would put Amy Dirts.
Amy.
With a, um, a term 4121. And then Greg Ger- or Ryan Gerhard, um, remove Greg Ackerman and put Ryan Gerhard there.
Got him, yep. So that leaves us with vacancies on the appeals commission now, three?
Correct.
That's removal of Mr. Jones? Okay. Okay, everybody understand?
No.
Okay. Uh, that's your, uh...
Motion.
Motion. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? I want to tell you, Terry, as long as you're in the audience, it was a close vote, but you made it, so.
Well, if I make just one comment, I, we had three people that interviewed this evening and all were extremely interested in Fridley and doing the good job for Fridley, and I much appreciate that.
Yeah, great.
Would depend very much on our commissions. Yes.
Okay, if there's no other further comment or discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. And now, for informal status reports. Do the staff or council have anything to report to the viewing, listening audience?
I think, uh, we had a wonderful turnout again for our corridor study and, um, a lot of good information shared and, I think, especially from, learning from other cities, what they did well and what they, um, what they learned and what they would do differently. And then we have one more coming up on, um, April 4th from 6 to 8, right back here.
Correct.
It's a busy day, the April 4th.
Yes.
There's also, uh, the Anoka County meeting up at Emmanuel Christian Center.
Yeah, on Osborne.
Regarding, uh, Osborne. Uh, also, uh, next week, or this week, the 28th is the Fridley Black and Gold, uh, banquet and fundraiser. And Bob, weren't you part of that group at one time?
Yes, at one time, yes.
Founded that, that group?
Yes, years ago.
Years ago. And then on Saturday, at 11 o'clock, our Anoka County Commissioner, Mandy Meisner, and our own mayor, Scott Lund, have coffee and conversation with the community.
So please come out and, uh, so I'm not looking at the four walls in here, so.
Can you repeat that time?
It's 11 a.m. this Saturday, till 12:30.
Is it really gonna be coffee?
Pardon me?
Is it really gonna be coffee?
Yes, there's really gonna be coffee. And in fact, I heard that Commissioner Meisner, I'm providing the coffee and she's doing the bagels. So that should bring in a couple hundred people, I'm sure.
Yeah.
All right. Good. If there's, uh, nothing further?
If nothing further, I would move that we adjourn.
Somebody else, hang on. Gotta be quick around here.
Sorry, Mayor, that was my fault. Um, just wanted to point you to the screen. There's a photo there of, uh, painted X on the roadway, one of quite a number that are around their neighborhoods. And basically, these are control points for a flight that we believe the state is, uh, performing right now. So we just made a confirmation, we haven't heard from them, but, uh, talked with the county and they knew that the state was doing some flights. And this is what they do so that they can stretch the photographs to the right, so they're, so they're exactly right to scale, to survey quality, so. So you'll see these, I've seen about four or five of them around, so you will see these in your neighborhood, and that's what they are.
Including the number underneath corresponds with something?
That's correct.
Oh.
Good to know.
Good to know, sorry.
Thank you for indulging me in that.
Okay, with that last motion, I would move that we adjourn.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All right, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for attending or watching your city council. Good evening.